Let's call the City Marine City Commission meeting to order. Regular meeting Thursday, January 16th, 7:00 PM. It is 7:00 PM now. Could we get a moment of silence for our dearly departed? And let's please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Here.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Merchant is absent this evening. And Commissioner Burkaman.
Here.
City Manager Levin.
Here.
Can I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Merchant?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the agenda from our December 19th meeting.
Support.
And just a reminder, if anybody would like to have anything moved from the consent agenda, it's time to do it now. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to public comment. Anyone in attendance is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name. Please limit your comments to five minutes. This is the time for you to raise issues. The Commission will not respond, but issues will be followed upon as necessary. Laura.
Laura Scatia, here representing 300 Broadway and the River Rectine Zone. So I just wanted to give everybody an update that today at 4:15, River Rectine Zone was officially given final sticker, green sticker approval from the City Inspector Tracy. So we should hopefully be opening up mid-February and we'll keep everybody, you know, abreast. So I just want to say thank you for everybody's support and patience and it's finally here.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Terry Avery, 123 North Bell River Avenue. I am here representing the Friends of City Hall. I'm announcing the Blue Denim Ball, which will be held January 25th at the Rivertown Event Center. The two previous years, they were out at the Perch Point Conservation Club, but we've moved in town. The doors will open at 5:30. We will feature the East China Community Big Band. It'll be a buffet dinner, open bar, music, raffles, 50/50, silent auction. The tickets are available at the Marine City Gunsmith, Vera Grace Emporium, the manager's office at Rivertown, Friends of City Hall Board Members, the Sweet Tooth. This fundraising event has helped in some of the expenses on the efforts that we're doing at City Hall. So we hope people will make it. It's been a fun evening and the band is very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Hearing none will move on to approval of the minutes for the City Commission regular meeting, December 19th, 2019.
So moved.
Support.
Motion supporting corrections or deletions to the minute. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with items A through F as presented.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote, ma'am. All right.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Burkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to the consent agenda, or the financial business. Need a motion to approve disbursements, including payroll for $478,813.74.
Make a motion we approve disbursements, including payroll for $478,813.74.
Support.
Any questions on that?
Just one. I notice, I know it's a new format and I like the new format, but we don't get the line item number anymore.
The GO?
Yeah.
I'll see if that's something we can add.
Okay. Thank you.
Roll call vote, please. Oh, if there's any other questions. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Burkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to unfinished business. Do we have anything for recreational marijuana zoning?
The, I was presented with some questions, very well-written questions, and I wanted to just go through a couple of those answers. There was a question about the taxation and the use of the tax money and kind of do we get any type question, which was a lot better phrase than that. There is a excise tax that is placed upon the facilities above the 6% normal sales tax in the amount of 10%. It was raised to try to make up for the loss of the 3% tax that falls off of medical marijuana facilities when the recreational facilities come into effect. There's a couple of big blocks of money that have to get taken care of, but eventually, when these facilities are up and running over time, there is some tax benefit that flows back to the municipality wherein the establishment is housed. So it, I think there's like about 20-some million dollars that has to go back to the state and then the state has to recoup all of its cost and then 35% goes to roads, 35% will end up going to schools, 15% to counties, and then 15% back to the municipalities of the money that is then available. So there is no ability for us to create our own, you know, Marine City sales tax and there's no way for us to create taxes on the transit of the materials through our communities, which was one of your questions. But there is eventually some money that flows back to the communities. Yeah, I just wanted to point out to you, you know, as you're looking through this, I periodically go online to look at those communities that have, you know, now opted in and have started to adopt their ordinance schemes and see how they're handling it. There's now 33 on the website municipalities that have opted back in and are heading towards an ordinance. On the other hand, there's interestingly, let me give you the exact number. I think about 15, when you get down to Wexford, 1,424 communities who are still out. And so I don't raise that, those figures to say what's good or bad. I'm just telling you that a lot of people are still out, they're on their way back in, but they are still working and it takes a lot of time. The way they rolled this out wasn't the best, but it was the state of Michigan. But it wasn't rolled out in such a manner where it was conducive to getting things done in a timely manner. So I'd like you to see that weight, you know, the weight of people who are still thinking about it and weighing it is 1,500 and we have 33 who are in play trying to get something done. Communities that I know that are in various stages. We had our planning commission do some legwork that was presented back to you. There's probably some more legwork we could do. One of the questions that was raised by Jacob that you read was, you know, he gave you a little analysis about how this was approved in the state, that the legalization of marijuana as a recreational aspect was approved, but did each community really vote to have it distributed and managed and sold and packaged and grown in their communities? That was not on the state ballot. And some communities have elected to now go on the ballot to their own communities in their elections and say, you know, we're, what do you think? Which is something you could contemplate. You've learned from your planning commission that you do have, when you draw all your circles and you do all your setbacks and you do have some areas here that would be suitable and still available for this type of a use, maybe you want to ask your voters, is that what you want us to do? And then take it from there. That's always an option and that can be done. There's already ballot languages floating around, you know, for those examples. And really get the feel for your own community. Other people have scheduled and held town hall meetings, which I believe can be effective, but most of the time you just don't get enough representative folks coming in to talk about the issue. But hold a series of town hall meetings and get a feel for what your city folks think about this. Because it's a pretty major decision, you know, it's tough for you to probably make this decision and go down the road. So I wouldn't be opposed to you thinking about both of those options, getting more public feedback directly on the issue. Because I don't think legalizing it on a state basis was the question that's now before you.
Right.
Hi.
Hi. I know this is something we talked about when this first all came up, but, and I don't know if you have an answer yet for this, but can a community now choose the type of facility? Can they opt in for just medical versus recreational?
No, your medical is behind you. You already made a decision on medical, okay? So you did not participate in medical and you have a, right now you've temporarily opted out of recreational. Your question is can we get back into medical? I don't know the answer to that. I think you probably could, but I really don't know the answer to that. But you can sit on the shelf with recreational for as long as you want. You can get back into that whenever you want. There's no cutoff where, hey, you know, we got to hear from you by, you know, by next February or you're forever out. That's not what's happening.
After the state gets their pot of money filled up and then we, assuming this would go forward and we get some money flowing back, are there any restrictions on that money? Does it have to go to law enforcement? Does it just get dumped into the general fund?
General fund.
General fund.
And remember on your annual registration and licensing, you can charge up to $5,000 per facility annually to help offset your costs of paperwork and enforcement and increase whatever. You have to kind of justify it, but most people, you know, who are adopting ordinances, it's like a miracle that the law says you can go up to 5,000, it's pretty much 5,000. So you would have that annual fee coming in per facility as well. But as far as income, we're only going to get 15% of the 10% in gross sales. After two years and after, what's the number?
35 million.
20 million. So until 2022 or for at least two years, 20 million from the fund must be annually, go back to clinical trials approved by the FDA that are researching the efficacy of marijuana in the treatment of U.S. Armed Service Veterans Preventing Ventren Suicide. So 20 million has to go there and then you got to wait a few years and then eventually there'll be this pot of money of which you will get 15%.
At max.
Max.
If not less.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It's kind of another situation is to allow them in there. The western states are already having problems with it. We're already having problems with it in our residential areas is the exhaust out of the basements in the growing areas into the air. And the odor and factors, townships now are looking at an odor ordinance because of the discharge of the vapors and stuff into the air, in the area. And this is in a residential, excuse me, and I hate to say, but I think it smells a lot like skunk, but. And it's a problem. I mean, so they've got to do some kind of scrubbing or cleaning to dump it. You don't know what they're going to do. I also have, that's not your problem, but I have one that came in and bought a resident in one of my units and then decided, he's from Birmingham, and decided that he was going to start growing in the house and wanted 380 electrical brought in. And Edison called me and said, we'll give it to him if you want it. And when I called him and asked him why he wanted it, he actually, his electrician didn't have the, I guess, the sense to say anything, except that one panel was for the house, the other panel was for growing. So I turned down the permit for the electrical, but there's other problems coming along besides trying to make money.
A lot of the ordinances that are being developed do have odor control provisions that you have to, communities are making the applicants demonstrate sufficient odor control in place and along with security and some other unique things in their ordinances. So some people are going with licenses, some people are requiring special use permits for the land and then a license. Some people are limiting the numbers. Some people are limiting, if you have one here, then you can't have one in the immediate adjacent property. There's all kinds of variations and I keep tracking them. There's just lots of variations in the ordinance schemes.
In the unit I'm talking about, we opted out, so.
Yeah, and it's nothing you have to rush into, but it is, you know, at some point if you want to throw it to the people and/or get the pulse of the people by holding some well-publicized town hall meetings, it's not a bad idea.
You got to remember the feds could come anytime and shut you down. Still federal.
Yeah, in fact, in one ordinance that I worked on, I put a provision in that said nothing in this ordinance is meant to create any form of immunity from prosecution under federal law. And now a lot of ordinances are adopting that because you don't want the defense to prosecution to be, well, the City of Marine City said it was okay. And you have had a couple of banking breakthroughs with respect to banks who are now handling the cash flow. Because of the FDIC involvement with banks, most of the banks won't handle the revenue coming from these operations because it could be seized, subject to seizure under federal law. But a couple of credit unions have now said they're willing to do it. One of the local problems you do have is that it is a cash transaction, big cash transaction, and everybody knows that. And that's what creates a little bit of a patrol issue. You know, when you knowingly have a facility that maintains lots of high-volume cash transactions, it's a breeding ground for potential issues. Like the little bar, you know?
That's true.
Any other question? Yes.
I have one more thing to add. I think this came from a conversation with Bill about neighboring communities and the residential zoning, that I think when we looked at the areas that we could have it in Planning Commission, we did not take into consideration the neighboring zoning. And I asked you, probably looking into that earlier.
Yeah, so we were looking at that setback. There isn't a per se mandatory setback from the residential zoning. I may have misspoke on that before, but there is absolutely no ability to put it in a residential zoning district. But most people are adopting setbacks from the residential line, which we may have not considered our boundaries. I don't know if we boundary up against residential. Well, it doesn't matter.
The area at 26 Mile and King Road is a being one district, but it borders, is that? Cotreville Township?
China or Cotreville?
Cotreville.
Just north of the highway there.
Both are residential.
I think that's agricultural, but.
We'll look at that.
You know, we didn't take that into consideration because it was just one of those things that didn't occur to us at the time.
Yeah, I guess the theory is, is you can't, you know, we can't stop at our boundaries with these setbacks. You know, we can't pretend Marine City is in its own box. We do have to look at what surrounds us immediately and make sure we're buffering back from, for example, if there's a school right on the boundary, then we have to make sure we're buffering from that school as well, even though it isn't in our community.
Well, all the way to Marsh Road is all residential going down.
Yeah.
And going up 26 Mile Road is Ag Residential.
Okay.
And I can tell you that for a fact because I worked there.
Okay. So we should probably take a look at some of those things and then, and I think I would ask you, you know, start thinking about how you might want to check the pulse of your community.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay.
Moving on to contract for 260 South Parker.
We have got representatives from the architects firm here to speak on behalf of
Just by way of introduction, Commissioners, we do now have final language in a design, build, and construction services agreement that have been worked out, are acceptable to the contractor, and I think that's been presented to you and I'll let the representative go from there.
Thank you. David Gasson with Partners in Architecture, Design, Build. Very happy to be here. We've kind of gone through a couple of revisions, Mr. Davis has pointed out, and I think we're at a point where we're ready to take some action. So I'm here tonight to go over any questions you may have from where we left off before because we were very conceptual at that stage and kind of ironed out some details, schedule and cost approach and how we're going to deliver the project. So if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to go through any of those things.
What's our bottom line?
Well, that's what we're working towards. So the schedule is we're at concept design and once we kind of say, let's move forward, we're going to take a couple of weeks to the end of this month, the 30th, to work with administration and city staff to finalize the concept into a preliminary development plan. And then through the 13th of February, it will be finalized with a guaranteed maximum price, which we will submit for your approval. And then from there, we'll start into the construction drawings. But at February 13th, we would know precisely what we guarantee the cost to be and what we're going to deliver as a project. And that will have been worked out with city staff and administration in terms of scope of work. The basis on how we move ahead is our estimate that we've prepared, the $640,000. So that's going to be our benchmark on does it go up or does it go down through the process of getting to the final preliminary package.
Now that we have access to the building, I think it would be good for everybody to be able to go through the building. I mean, I've been in there now. There's a lot of things that happened to the building that we need to look at, but I think some of these things, like the two restrooms, I'm still concerned why we want to get rid of those in total. So I mean, there's still some questions, but I think maybe it'd be a good thing that everybody gets a chance to go through the building, see the space, take a look at it compared to this drawing, so that everybody knows what it's going to kind of come to. I'm just wondering if the storage area couldn't be moved over to this bigger storage area. That's the small thing. I mean, the rest of it, I don't have too much trouble with. I went through some of these things. So I guess, looking at your contract, when you get to a certain point, I know we're way long ways out from here, so you still have to sit with the city, you still have to figure out. I know there was a whole section in here on exterior and I'm kind of concerned how much we're going to spend with that because that exterior is kind of bad and I didn't know if it was really worth putting all that kind of money into it if eventually we were just going to side the building. I know we have to put windows in, I know, and I know some of it's rotted.
And those are precisely the areas that we wound up narrowing down the scope to just what you were saying. Let's repair the things that could get worse. If it's status quo, okay, we're not going to be doing any wholesale changes to the outside. So there's repair to damaged areas and there's, I'll call it touching up around areas that we're making new openings into, and obviously the openings are going to be new windows or new doors.
Yes.
But the area immediately around those are going to have to have some touching to them. So that's the extent of the exterior of the building. Majority of the exterior is the site improvement part, not necessarily building improvement part.
Okay. So, I mean, these are all just estimates. I went back to your sheets where you had all your estimates on. These are just high estimates until you can really get in there and.
Well, they're reasonable estimates from experience and the scope of work that we've identified. It's going to change, no doubt. One, it could be, let's tweak this or that, which could have some material change to it, but we may find that there's some options within choices we've made. I'll pick one, carpet. Carpet could be $8, $7, or $6 when we make the selection. Right now, we've said carpet. But when we pick it, it could be a variable within that one little category. And we hope by doing that process through the 13th, we'll be able to find areas that we can make cost choices and kind of maneuver the final cost a little bit.
Okay.
Versus making a choice on just, call it the generic thing, carpet, to continue that example.
Yeah. I know some of the things, it was in here about new toilets and new stuff, and I know we do have things, how are we going to handle what's in there? I know some of it's going to be demoed. Some of it's been removed and stacked. I know our city policy is we have to bid that stuff out. So what's going to happen with all that?
I'm not precisely sure what you're referring to, but I was curious when you said, things have changed now that people have moved out. I'd like to see what the changes are too, if it resulted in damage, because that would be one more thing we have to add to the list.
Doors have been removed, toilet was taken out, which the toilets, there's nothing wrong with. There was a few things that have changed in there. That's why I say I think it's time that everybody goes over and takes a good look at what's going on in the building, what can be salvaged out of the building, what.
Is that the tenant at the time?
Yeah, I did have a conversation with the tenant and he said that there was some miscommunication between a contractor that they had and that they would do whatever they needed to, to make it right, including putting doors and toilets back in.
I'm not sure you're supposed to take the toilets when you leave.
Bingo.
Or the doors.
Or the doors and the door casings.
Under the real estate law, yeah. Under the real estate law, once it's a fixture to the building, it's part of the building.
I think doors and toilets are fixtures.
Trim, there was a lot of trim removed, ceiling tiles, I mean.
Talking about the bathrooms, I had talked to the mayor.
Axe splashes.
Yeah, I had talked to the mayor that.
Yes.
Flooring, but anyway. I had talked to the mayor and here a few years ago, we had an emergency and we ran all over the place looking to put. And we ran all over the place looking to put people up for heat and stuff. And I thought, and that would be perfect to leave the bathrooms the way they were, and use the back area for emergency if we had a brownout or a blackout like we did before. So people could have a place to go and warm up, and you would have the facilities there.
For showering.
With the design, we do have it set up that way, that it's in the back half where the meeting spaces, we'd be able to set cots up back there. But we have this conflict that we have the storage in between, which needs to be protected. So being able to utilize those bathrooms would be a completely different design.
But if you use the rack, the railing, like trade slide ones there, you could eliminate half that building with your storage.
Because that's a huge...
I mean, two units, three units right now that's got the roller storage. And it's in a real small closet area because you can slide all your stuff back and forth on the tracks.
Yeah, something we should look at because that, I mean, once you get in here and look at it, that area is huge. You know, and I think this one little closet here could be moved over into there. And I don't think it would cut that much, but that'd be... But that's why I think it'd be a good time that we all go through it.
Well, that's the way this process is set up, and it's sort of a little bit iterative from the standpoint that the contractor is reacting to what you want and reacting to what city of the folks, the needs of the office. The storage of documents is key. How it gets done, I mean, I just, that's fine, but I mean, that is the core, one of the core functions of a...
But as of right now, we're just looking at the contract.
Yes.
The point for tonight is just contract only?
Yes.
We're not talking costing or design at this point?
We are not, because we don't...
I just want to stay on point.
Yeah, there's a couple of processes left where you have to come back, and a final decision on the not to exceed price has to be voted on by this...
And the design.
And the design, the final design and the final price. And then everything going forward operates within that price.
So today is basically more or less housekeeping to set that up?
Yes.
And the color scheme is figured out by them or by...
That's done during design and in a different phase. Right now, we're talking the legal aspect of it.
Okay.
And I think maybe an evening next week, we could set up having the doors open and having as many people there as possible be able to answer questions. If we can find a day, maybe next week.
I think we could definitely make that work. And that would be to our benefit to get as much input as possible in this first segment up through the 30th. So when we start moving into refining it to the 13th, we got everyone's opinions, desires, and wants and so forth. And there's a lot of things we've looked at already that we could maybe just share and say why pro-con, we opted to go this direction. Some of the high-density storage that you guys just talked about. It's a good thing to do from a square footage, but it comes at a great cost. A system to accommodate this much storage would be about $50,000 roughly. But you do the cost-benefit analysis of real estate versus product cost, then that's your choice, obviously, because you may want the flexibility of the square footage for something else. There's some things to debate in your process of deciding how to spend the money, but we're going to give you those options to do that.
Any other questions on the contract itself? Can I get a... Can I get a motion to approve?
There's, okay, so we got a section in here that's the city's responsibility, so that you're going to have to go through all this. This is page nine, nine and 10. So you're going to do that independent while they're working on the other half? We're going to get this part done as far as surveys, encroachments, boring tests, and all that kind of stuff? And figure out if there's anything hazardous in there?
To the extent we need it.
Okay.
And to the extent you need it, I'm going to help facilitate that process to bring to you the best options for each one of those things. So we have a role in that, but ultimately, you're the decision maker on it. It just helps you get to a point you can make the decision.
Okay. All right.
So can I get a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion to accept the contract for 260 South Parker Street, which is the preliminary design-build contract.
Support.
Any further questions on just the contract portion, not design or...
Cost.
Cost or anything? This is just the contract itself. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
It's roll call.
It's not. There's no money involved.
There isn't?
Just humor me, Mr. Mayor.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Klaassen.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Voltschukary.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're looking forward to working with you and serving the community here.
Thank you.
I guess we'll touch base next week and from a timing standpoint, what's up for our sessions?
Yeah, we'll work on setting up some night next week. I know we've got the CED board on Wednesday night.
Tuesday's out too.
Tuesday's out. And the other nights that maybe don't work good.
Yeah.
So Tuesday and Wednesday are out, so maybe Thursday? Oh, wait, no, Thursday's out, we've got Monday night? Why don't we do Wednesday before CED or after?
Wednesday early?
Wednesday 5:00.
Wednesday's good.
Wednesday 5:00. Can I get enough support for that?
22nd.
22nd?
I'm in. I've already seen it, so I'm...
Yeah. So we'll plan on Wednesday 5:00 to have a walk-through. And we'll try and get as many people as we can over there to answer questions if we can be available.
I am neglected to introduce a couple of my associates here tonight. Brian Hines will be the overall project coordinator, and Azar Mahdi will be in the project in terms of coordination of documentation, design, and construction. So you'll see the three of us mostly, but there'll be many others involved as well. Sorry to do that earlier, guys. So we'll see you next week.
Yep.
Yep.
All right, moving on to paving infrastructure engineering plans proposal.
Well, a couple or several meetings ago, we approved moving forward with a couple of infrastructure projects in the city, that being Bell Street and West St. Clair. These are projects that we will be doing, the water main underneath the road as well as the road. This is a proposal from Wade Trim to put together all of those construction drawings in the amount of $31,500, and also managing the project. At this point, just be looking for approval for the contract to move forward so they can start working on those plans, subject to the project schedule that they have in there.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Motion support, questions on it?
Just a general question to Mike. I know we're replacing, I know this one main is not real deep, and that's been an issue, and you're changing them from...
This is the Bell one you're talking about, right?
Yes. No, West St. Clair. Well, either one, I guess.
Both of them.
I mean, on an average, when you're doing, I know we have other streets that only have four, so you're only going to do certain ones if they're shallow? Or are you going to try to eventually do a lot more of them?
We're going to do a lot more of them. We're going to try to.
Because I...
St. Clair Street's got a two-inch in there. And I don't, do not want to go bigger than a six-inch because there's such things stagnant water, water can't be, enough water can't push through it from the homeowners. So that's why we're staying with a six-inch on West St. Clair.
Okay, because we have a four on West Bullburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's the only reason why I'm asking, because I didn't know, and now I find out, and I just wondered if...
Yeah, we, they, there is a map of all the hydrants that are on what size mains and...
Yeah, but I'm just saying, we didn't consider doing that one, even though we paved it.
We didn't have the funds to do it.
Okay. That's just, just a question.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other questions while Mike's still standing?
Might as well stay up.
Yeah, you're going to be a while. Any other questions on this one, though? Because this one, we have to leave, we have water running when we get cold and...
On Bell Street, yes. And on West St. Clair, I actually have probably about 100 feet of main that freezes up until the first tap. And then luckily, last couple of years, it hasn't been deep enough to freeze.
Were you going from 21 to 24? Are you doing that one side? Are you splitting it between both sides? Are you just doing it one side of the street where you're widening it, Bell Street?
Both sides. It's going to go up, match the curb between Third and Parker.
Okay.
Any other questions for him? Hearing none, I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Klaassen.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Next, we're moving on to lawn care maintenance for the city properties as an RFP.
I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions. I guess I'll take the preliminary overview of this project. Last couple of years, we've been talking about, or contracting out the lawn care maintenance for the city so that that would free up resources of some of our part-timers to be able to help with some of the other jobs and things going on in the city. We prepared the documentation and have this ready to go. We've outlined all of the specific areas that would need to be mowed and included a map with those as well. And certainly, hoping that we would be able to get some good bids and prices for this. We will be keeping the equipment for at least a year, see how things go with any contractor. And we would like to get this out as soon as possible so that we can hopefully get some good pricing.
Whose equipment are they using, their own?
Oh, they got their own equipment.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure, because it's a little confusing on the second page where it says that, you know, we expect them to maintain equipment, blah, blah, blah. I just wanted to make sure that was their equipment, not our equipment.
This is similar to what we have in our contract for Amtera.
Okay. And the other thing, I'll get with you on this side, but I think there's a couple of things missing, so...
A couple properties?
Yes.
Anything in particular?
There's a few.
Talked about right now?
So, well, you've got, on the bridge of the Bay Trail, you've got DeGersy to Metropolis, but we cover past DeGersy going out to the first dredged ditch.
You're right, yes. They missed that one.
That's one. I know we've got St. Clair Street to High Street. Does that, that includes the end of High Street, correct?
St. Clair to the end of High Street.
In front of Bell River Apartments?
No, we go as far as the edge of the driveway. That's their personal easement that goes through. They got their own storm sewer that goes through there. That's their guard rail, that's everything. We don't maintain that part.
That belongs to who?
The apartment building.
High Street does?
No, High Street is our...
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
On the river side is theirs.
Okay, but do you have High Street in there? End of High Street? Because I know those people have been cutting it for years.
There's two High Streets.
I'm talking on the other side of...
Between Bell River and the guard rail? Or on this section?
The other side of...
Mrs. Thompson's?
Yes.
Yes, we do take care of that once in a while when they call about the weeds, about 10 feet behind it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. How about the end of River Street? Because I know Al cuts it over there.
Well, these are all on there, so if people stop cutting them, it's covered.
Yeah, but we're still missing a few street ends and stuff that homeowners are still cutting for us. That's all I'm pointing out.
Okay.
Okay, so I got a few. I'll just send you what I got, and then you guys can look at them, and then you can figure out whether they are or not.
Not a problem.
Other than that, you know, I think this is, we should try it out. Everybody else has been doing it and...
Any other questions? Hearing none? No roll call this time?
This is just going out for RFPs.
It's just going out.
All in favor? Oh.
We need to talk more.
We're supposed to do a motion before we even discuss this.
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we, do you want me to read this part? Request for written proposal for lawn care maintenance for city properties?
Support.
Approve it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, can I add pending our discussion on...
Updating the map with the properties, yeah.
All in favor this time?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Next, or Computer Network Support Services, RFP.
We went out about three years ago for RFP for the same service, and we're currently with High Tech. Their contract is set to expire in April. So now would be the time if we decide we want to go out for bids for this service again.
You would like us to go off of bids, correct?
There have been some issues, and I've gotten some complaints from Commissioners. We've had some issues in our office. I think it would be prudent to see if we can get any better pricing out there.
Can I get a motion to approve before we start talking about it?
I make a motion to approve the request for proposal for our Computer Network Support Services.
Support.
Motion support, any questions on the RFP itself? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. Next, moving on to Resolution 1-00, or 2020 for redevelopment-ready communities.
As you all know, we have been engaged with the MEDC, working on the redevelopment-ready, redevelopment-ready communities program. We have been working on completing information and getting it to the state. And we finally got the baseline report back from them, which was our review of where we are in conjunction with their program. As you can see from, I think it's the third page in, the evaluation snapshot shows the areas that we are deficient in. One thing I would like to note is that Sections 5 and 6 are all red because we have not completed any of that. I did have a meeting with Dan Casey, the Director of the Economic Development Alliance. And being a member, they are able to assist us to complete all of those items, fortunately. So that's something that, in essence, we won't necessarily have to do much from the city's perspective or the city's cost on that. The other items are things that we have either already started working on or we just need to improve upon for our procedures. For example, for planning, we are requested as part of the redevelopment-ready communities to put together flow sheets for developers or anyone that comes into the community to get a better indication, an idea of how the process goes based upon what we have in our ordinances. So that's something that we've actually already started working on. So to be able to continue moving forward with this process, we're looking for support from Commission through this resolution to be able to continue working through this process. One thing to keep in mind is that if we do stop moving forward with this process, we will not be eligible for funding through MEDC.
Can I get a motion to approve before we start?
So moved.
Support.
Any questions on this for the city manager? Hey, let's have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Klaassen.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to city manager's report.
Since my last report, I have met with Jim Sa, Jim, excuse me, Jim Schaefer, who is the code enforcement agent for East China. I spoke to him about providing services for Marine City. And he is available and could start as early as February. I will be touching base with him probably closer to the beginning of February about his availability for that. We had our follow-up for the First Impression Tourism Grant that we received about a year ago. It was very interesting because we talked about a lot of the projects and things that have occurred since we got the grant, and it was actually pretty eye-opening. He said that we were one of the communities that has really done the most since we gained... He said that we were one of the communities that has really done the most since we gained our review about that first impression. Uh, I met with the superintendent of East China Schools. She provided me a little bit of information about their upcoming bond issue. She would like to just come and speak to commission on that, about the upcoming election, just during the public comment period. As I mentioned, I met with Dan Casey of the EDA, and we had a really good conversation about the redevelopment-ready community, so I'm glad that we are still an EDA member, so that they will be able to help us complete a lot of these action items for the redevelopment-ready community. I did a bit of a webinar today on some HR legal things that have been changing. There hasn't really been much that I saw in this webinar that's going to directly impact Marine City. Most of it was regarding a lot of unions and foul language, interestingly enough. 300 Broadway update, Bill Clausen had asked me about that. Laura already kind of presented on their side. I spoke with Tracy, our building official, about the other half, the larger half, that the Friends of City Hall is working in. They are still working on getting permits for their furnace. They are still working on getting funding and permits for the fire suppression system. And they're also looking to start getting plans set for some type of lift or something to get people into the building. I did let Tracy know that when he spoke with them, that that would not only need to come before commission, but also before historic district, because it is the exterior of the building. I would also like to thank our temporary employer, employee from Robert Half, Erin. She completed her last day today, so now Megan is, unfortunately, without any help. Erin was an amazing asset to be able to help us get through the transition from Mary Ellen's retirement. And I hope that she does well in the future, and certainly thank her very much. And I think that's all I have.
Any, any questions for the city manager?
When I asked you about the permitting, uh, I see in the newspaper, they say they have the furnace in.
And they may have it in, but?
But no permits.
No permits, yeah. So they'll have to work with Tracy on that.
And have we got set up hours for Tracy yet?
So we're looking at hours Tuesday afternoon and Thursday mornings. No specific hours yet, still working on a bit of a backlog and working between the communities. We've done a little bit of juggling in the office with workloads. So Cheryl is going to be working with him as the building clerk. She's picking up a little bit more hours to help handle that. And then shifting Kathy to just doing the, the treasures department and cemetery.
There was some questions at the planning commission about why the building inspector wasn't here for the review of the plans that were brought to us.
So the building inspector is just that, he's a building inspector, he's not a professional planner or anything. I'm looking at the budget for next year. I spoke with Wade Trim about what it would cost to have someone from Wade Trim be at our planning commission meetings when we have site plan reviews. So I'll probably be including that in our next budget.
Good. Couple of quick ones. I see you have the mockups complete for the new website. Can we see it?
Yeah.
Okay. And the second thing is, on the sidewalk thing, are we going to discuss what the next phase is, since we've been through phase one everywhere, right? What the next phase is going to be for the next season?
Yeah, yeah, we'll be working on developing something and bringing it to the commission to talk about next steps for that program.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you. Moving on to commissioner privilege and liaison reports. Cheryl, would you like to get us started?
Yes. As Elaine mentioned, um, just a little bit ago, that we do have a very important bond vote coming up. The vote is actually March 10th for the East China School District. There is a lot of information out there on the East China School District website. Lot of questions and answers and meetings and that kind of stuff. I just want to remind everybody that it's, um, none of our jobs here at the city commission to tell anybody how to vote. We are just here to encourage people to vote and to get as much information as they can. There are some deadlines that everyone needs to be aware of. Like if you're not registered to vote, the last day to actually register to vote for this bond is February 24th. And you can vote with an absentee ballot also, and the deadline for that is March 6th. So the superintendent will be here on February 6th to talk during, um, open, open discussions, so. That was it. Oh, and I also wanted to remind everybody that all of a sudden, the Bell River is so high right now. I, I, I just really worry that, I have friends that live on the water, and I said, you really need to start protecting your homes. I mean, they're talking about, I mean, we've had people here, the how, how high the water's going to be, record-breaking levels, and I just don't want anybody to wait until the water is high and it's freezing cold and, you know, protect your homes now. Forget about the boathouses and all that stuff, just get your homes protected. It's going to be a really rough spring, so, and that's it.
And I guess the liaison for the planning commission, they, we're discussing a, a new project in town for a hotel, not a hotel, but a residential dwelling unit downtown. And they looked at also the master plan, they're working on, looking at the master plan and how they need to change some stuff that was in there and get it back to. And, uh, basically, that was it at the, and we discussed some of the marijuana stuff at the, at the plan. And like I, I tried, I told them, we are a recommending body to, we are not telling them that, to put it here, we're telling them that this is where we're looking at, that it may be able to go. We're a recommending body to the commission. And as for that, I'm glad everybody got through the Christmas season and the, and the New Year, and we're all here. It just, uh, I know it was a couple of hectic weeks for me, because I drove down to Florida and sat in a parking lot for, on I-75 for four, four lanes. It was just crazy. I thought it was spring break. But, uh, but that's all I have. Everybody have a good day.
I have nothing tonight.
Lisa?
I just want to say, recently, we had a terrible house fire, and I just want to say what a great community we have. These people lost their home, and, um, the next day, everybody in this community was trying to chip in and help them. Old Newsboys took them shopping the next day to try to get them some clothes. Everybody donated clothes, people donated money, they donated gift cards, everything to help this family. They have three kids, and it was very devastating for them, and, but it's just great to see our community, no matter what, steps up when people need something, and they help them out, and they don't ask any questions, they just want to help. So it's really wonderful to see. And on that same day, since I'm on the fire authority, too, our new fire truck showed up. At the same time, Dave and the crew were trying to put out the fire, and, um, so we, we do have it out here, if any of the commission would like to see it after the meeting. It's a really, really nice truck. It's got a lot of nice features on it. We've got the other one sold already to somebody in Minnesota, so they're going to come get the old engine. But, um, it's just nice to see we're going to get this truck without having to increase anything for anybody, and we did a lot of saving for it, and it's nice to see. So if you get a chance, come on out after the meeting and take a look at the truck.
Jacob?
Nothing.
Your bank representative on that transaction was very easy to deal with.
Yeah.
Very, very, very skilled, very knowledgeable.
Yeah. We've dealt with them for the last couple of trucks.
Yeah, very knowledgeable.
Well, Lisa, I don't have to announce the delivery of the new engine. I'd just like to thank the departments that helped us out at the structured fire, because we had a dual call at the same time. We had a secondary structured fire at the one hour in on the, the main fire in St. Clair, Algenack, Clay Township, Ira, Tri-Hospital, all assisted, along with PD help with traffic control and trying to keep the people from driving over our hose. And then Mike's crew was, they're phenomenal, and it was, everything was icing up, and the two guys you had over there were non-stop back and forth helping us out. It, it worked, it still amazes Algenack and some of the other communities when they come up and see how well every city service works together in a situation like that. So, Mike, I want to thank you and your guys again, they were just spot on, just like always. And with that, we also have the Fireman's Ball coming up. February 1st at the Rivertown Event Center. Tickets are being sold here and here, and we don't have anybody else selling them, so. We also have the wild, the Lions Wild Game Dinner coming up on?
February 10th, and there's only like 13 tickets left, so if you want some, you better get them quick.
February 10th?
Yeah.
And then we also have the annual meeting for the Chamber of Commerce on Tuesday, which we hand out some local awards for community involvement. So if people would like to attend that, it's at the Lions Club on Tuesday at 5:00. And the fire department will get that one, too. We're going to give out a merit award for that, that one, so. With that, that's all I've got.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.